We are now at an update from our environmental sustainability in Ann Arbor Public Schools. Dr. Swift, would you like to start that off?
Very good, thank you. We have our presenters joining us virtually this evening, trustees. I appreciated the support of the trustees. We had to reschedule our study session from last week. And so we are rolling this report into this evening as an information item. So I know I'll just give a brief introduction and then you'll bring in Mr. Ambrosino and Mr. Segal, right? Okay, very good. Trustees, we've appreciated over many years your demonstrated commitment to environmental sustainability. We look forward each April to giving an annual update. And then we also appreciate updating throughout the year on these topics. This has been a busy year with environmental sustainability in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. We were coming off of Earth Day last week. But just in case folks may not be aware, the foundation for our approach to environmental sustainability is in our Policy 8000 series that was approved in 2018. That policy series states that climate change is real, increasing, and caused by human activity. The Ann Arbor community is committed to practice and support a healthy environment for present and future generations. The AAPS district has a responsibility to help prepare current and future generations to respond to climate change through the reduction of harmful human activities, the promotion of human activities that restore the environment, and the development of strategies to adapt to climate change. In the Ann Arbor Public Schools, we really look at our work in three key and critical areas. First, our most important role is that of teaching and learning and developing within our students an appreciation and a commitment to environmental sustainability through environmental education. Area number one is the most transformative work that we do. In just a second, we're going to go to a video. Forgive me, Court and Dave, welcome. We're so glad you're here. I left out the introduction, but just a minute, we'll get to it. In area number two, we live our organizational commitment to the Capital Bond Program to practice environmental sustainability in the way that we address the renewal of our school campuses. And then thirdly, Mr. Emil Lautzana will follow Mr. Ambrosino, Mr. Segal, this evening to update us on Capital Bond Program and environmental sustainability. And then Mr. Lautzana will also share an update on the work of the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. And trustees, you charged this task force this past year to advise the AAPS Board of Education on a formal sustainability plan that will support achieving the goal of environmental sustainability, guide adjustments in operations, and advise on AAPS capital improvement planning and other district endeavors related to sustainability. We are looking forward to some exciting next steps. This year during 2022, the Finance Committee will be reviewing, coming up, some exciting next steps regarding reducing our consumption for utility costs. And so there's a lot to be discussed on that, but that will be coming up soon. Also, another next step is the appointment of an Environmental Sustainability Officer to confirm a formal environmental sustainability plan with goals and metrics recommended by the Sustainability Task Force and finalized and approved by the Board of Education. We have innovative next steps coming in environmental practices and continued enhancement of a preschool through 12th grade environmental sustainability education opportunities for our students. Preschool all the way through 12th in the Environment Matters in Ann Arbor Public Schools. So Dave and Court, our environmental educators, it's so great to see you. I know that a lot of times you're out on field expeditions with our students. And some of those occur out at Freeman Center, Freeman Environmental Education Center. And then other activities occur in other locations. But you are the anchor of part of what we're so proud of over several decades in the district. But before you guys get up, we're going to share some highlights of the environmental sustainability education efforts across the district. These guys are the heart and soul, but we've got teachers doing this work all over the district. So you're going to see just a brief video. So Dave and Court, stand by, we'll be right back to you. There we go.
Today we have our Animal Habitat Museum. Third graders picked an animal of their choice. And with that animal, they researched. And then with that research, they put that into an informational writing piece. We've also connected our science unit to this, where we've learned about animal traits and their habitats. And with all that information, they were able to create their animal out of clay in art class and use all this new knowledge about their animal to create an animal habitat. The kids are really proud of their work and they've done an excellent job. And what's been great about this project is we have been able to collaborate with our art teacher, Ms. Leonard. She helped the kids create their animals out of clay. And she helped guide them to make sure that their animals had the traits and characteristics that they've learned about throughout our science units and throughout our reading research.
Here's the thing. So I got some black construction paper for the trunk. Best thing is that I finally figured out how to make it stand.
We are giving all the classrooms a tour in the garden. And then they are going to get to plant something, some peas or tomato, and take it home. And they get a little Earth Day sticker. So we're celebrating Earth Day with an Earth Garden Week. Every day is Earth Day here. But we really want to get people out into the garden because it's an outdoor space. It's a great place to do any type of curricular work that ties into, you know, into what we're doing here. Every child should have access to food, no matter what. And that's a lot of the reason why we do school gardening is so that it's an equitable distribution and that everyone has a chance to understand where their food comes from, as well as, you know, see themselves part of the food system. We've got perennials growing here and annual plants. So some that we have to plant, which are annuals and perennials that come back. So we're showing everybody a tour and just giving them a heads up of what's in here, how to use tools, what kind of tools we have, what are our garden rules, and just overall having a fun time and being exposed to the garden.
And I work in the garden so that children learn how important it is to really tend to plants, take care of the earth, and to really work together to create something, to grow something.
So we have about 20 to 25 school gardens we're supporting. Right now, I would say due to COVID, we're trying to reopen a lot of our gardens. But we have about 20 functional gardens right now. And then the idea for gardens is just to get kids outside and really getting connected to nature and being able to use all of their senses. We know that if they use all their senses, we're really hitting the whole child, their ability to learn in different ways with different senses. So we're excited about that.
So we followed this thing, and it was this bird, this kill, the kill deer. And it was doing its dance of like, it's, it's, it has a broken wing, but we found the egg.
I love it. It's so cool.
So environmental sustainability is easy as one, two, three. And the foundation area number one is a quality environmental education. I just want to give a shout out in this moment to two of the finest environmental educators I've ever had the opportunity to know. And it is my great delight to introduce Mr. Dave Segal, Mr. Court Ambrosino. Take it away, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Madam President and trustees, so happy to be with you this evening to give an update on the Environmental Education Program. We, some of you have seen a version of our program overview before. But we've really tried to, in addition to give you a little bit of information about where we've been and where we are, really tried to include a lot of updates on what's happening this school year and also looking ahead to the 22, 23 school year.
So a little bit of history. 60 years ago, five staff members, they were called Conservation Consultants at that time, pioneered an outdoor education program in Ann Arbor Public Schools, which is now the Environmental Education Program. Dr. Stapp pretty much wrote the book on this. And since that time, we've been making lifetime memories happen for students. This is a big number, over 50,000 individual students have experienced some type of memory with us.
Bill Stapp, who founded the program, also played an integral role in the foundational conference of environmental education, the field of environmental education, and helped craft the Tablisi Declaration that laid out the definition of EE, or environmental education. There's five categories within the field. Awareness, knowledge, attitudes, skills, and participation. As we think about our existing programming and aim to make enhancements to the program and expand the program, we've been thinking about these five categories and finding ways to fill some of the gaps, to make sure we're creating really well-rounded environmentally literate graduates. The video we've linked here, we won't show tonight, but is a great overview, two-minute overview of the field of environmental education. We think environmental ed is uniquely positioned as an interdisciplinary field of study to create highly engaging learning opportunities for Ann Arbor Public Schools students now and in the future. And we think this is just a really important moment for EE in Ann Arbor Public Schools, given all of the goals and initiatives that you can see in the blue arrows. We are just so happy to be helping the school district meet the moment and take these opportunities on.
So those 50,000 students have been, had the opportunity K through six, sometimes a little further. While our current programming, even with COVID pivots, we did it. We've been serving pretty much all of K through six. By the end of the year, we'll have it done. We have two certified teachers now and 2,000 hours of volunteer time with fantastic naturalists, including some high-powered ones that have backgrounds in geology or entomology. And our newest chapter is implementing the Freeman Environmental Center. We collaborate with so many people. Our collaborations include a list down below of local partners. And we have a diversity of stakeholders. We engage and communicate often. We have a rich website to help us do that. We raise money as part of an endowment to help fund the program for the last 15 years.
Dave Segal has been at the helm of the program since 1997. I joined the program in 2019 to help with expansion and development of the Freeman Center. We have a small pool of environmental specialists who serve as substitute trip leaders when needed. We so appreciate that team of talented people. And an amazing group of volunteer naturalists who help lead small group learning experiences for students. We currently have 25 active and trained volunteers, and we're always on the lookout for more. So we invite interested community members to visit our website and contact us if you would like to get involved.
We start with young vibes and kindergarten. And during COVID, we pivoted and made a COVID-friendly outdoor lesson for them. And we got rave reviews. They focused on animal habitats. With a bonus, we actually had them grow some oak saplings as part of the lesson.
Our first graders study animal adaptations and learn about strategies that animals use to survive the Michigan winter.
In second grade, we focus on plants and we experience plant communities and we study plant life cycles.
Third graders study habitats, both, we offer both terrestrial and aquatic habitat studies.
In fourth grade, we study and collect rocks and minerals, and we learn about glacial history. In fact, on one of our recent finds behind me, you can see a rock that I cut with my diamond saw that has something so strange in it. Our two volunteer geologists are still arguing about what it is.
Our fifth graders experience the unique winter survival program where they work in small teams to build a cooking fire and prepare their lunch. They learn stewardship practices. And we'd like to acknowledge Food Services for their support this year in providing individual meals and creating a COVID-safe meal plan for our fifth graders.
For sixth grade, we did another COVID pivot to study hydrology, this time on the campuses of the middle schools. And we are looking for problems and solutions to local watershed issues.
That was a quick overview of our current programming. And we're going to switch now to talking a little bit about our progress at Freeman. We're working to put Freeman back on the map. We realized it wasn't on this version of a district map. So we maybe need to get some paint and add that back on.
Exactly. Thank you, Court.
Yeah. As you all are aware, the Advisory Committee for the Freeman Environmental Education Center delivered recommendations to the board in June of 2019. Won't go into those in detail today, but wanted to point out, we linked that document here for your review if you want to return to those. And we're proud to share some updates on our progress on implementing these recommendations. So this year, we have moved to the Freeman Center. We are materials and our office now located at the site. Two instructional spaces have been renovated. We're working to create new displays. Classroom technology is currently being installed and also creating some visuals and window clings inside the building to have in place for fall. More than half of our fifth grade classes conducted their field trip winter survival program at Freeman this year. We've launched an educational prairie restoration project. And we're also underway on an observational carbon farming project, which involves a carbon sequestration study. Would invite board members to come out and visit the site and see these projects sometime. We've improved the trail system and mowing plan for the site. We've held multiple service events and tree planting efforts with our youth council. We're growing some native grasses, flowers, and trees at Freeman. And we've welcomed a lot of different community stakeholders to the site, including a presentation for our statewide Michigan Alliance for Environmental and Outdoor Education during our annual conference in October. Still yet this spring, we're planning to make improvements to our front courtyard, construct some composting infrastructure, and we're going to have an art installation onsite related to our prairie restoration project. So a lot to see, and again, would invite board members to come and visit. I'm going to show a quick, a quick video here that highlights our prairie restoration project, which we're so proud of. I want to recognize Aisha Biswas, who is a graduate student from the U of M School for Environment and Sustainability, who has supported this project and done a wonderful job on her work with us. Another video there for you to visit at another time if you're interested. I want to talk a little bit about our youth council, the Freeman Environmental Youth Council. This is a high school environmental leadership group, an extracurricular club that's now in its third year. And so proud of our AAPS students who've taken on this important work and joined in, both in working, you know, at the Freeman Center and also in district-wide sustainability initiatives. I'm going to try to highlight some of the work and accomplishments they've done. So this is the group's mission statement. "To promote environmental literacy and sustainability through youth advocacy and decisive action. Recognizing the power of a passionate student collective to inspire, coordinate, and champion local initiatives to spark global change for future generations." An inspiring mission statement created by the students. And over the last few years, we've been proud to see them put that mission into action. They have hosted a virtual symposium. They have created multiple publications with unique content created by the students. They've created an environmental pledge to invite other members of the school community to pledge for sustainable action. They've participated in multiple service events and even contributed to virtual curriculum that we created last school year. Here are some photos inside one of the renovated spaces at Freeman during a recent native plant propagation workshop that our youth council participated in. And it was really neat. They paid it forward with the knowledge that they gained in actually a series of workshops this year and participated in the Earth Day Festival just this past weekend with the city of Ann Arbor and focused on native plants and taught participants how to transplant native plants and seed native plants. And so are putting their knowledge into action, which is great to see. Wanted to let you see a little bit from the students in their own words. And so a quick video with four of our current youth council members who are representing four different subcommittees to highlight some of the projects that are going on within the council.
Hi, I'm Eliana Adler. I'm a sophomore at Pioneer High School. Something I've enjoyed about youth council is getting to know a lot of people who are passionate about the same things as I am and just getting to know people from the other high schools around Ann Arbor. And a project I'm currently working on is writing PENPA letters between youth council students and third grade classes. We're currently finishing up the drafts, and then we're going to send them out.
My name is Sylvah Das, and I'm a senior at Community High School. Something I've enjoyed about youth council is being able to meet and work with people of similar interests and passions as me. And a project I'm working on right now is a newsletter to help inform people about composting and recycling initiatives in AAPS.
Hi, my name is Aiden Hale. I'm a part of the Freeman Environmental Youth Council. And the one thing I'm currently working on is a brochure for high school counselors to give out to students in order to inform them about environmental careers past college.
Hi, my name is Ellen Ron, and I'm currently an 11th grader at Pioneer High School. I enjoy working with the youth council because we've been trying to actively help the community at Ann Arbor Public Schools. Right now in Freeman, I'm a part of the Outdoor Service Committee, and we've been trying to plant oak saplings around Ann Arbor Public Schools.
Also happy to share implementing another short-term recommendation from our advisory committee to offer some summer programming at Freeman. This summer, we'll offer two weeks of full-day summer camp for seven- to 10-year-olds, middle-to-upper elementary-age students. It'll be led by Ann Arbor Public School staff and also with help from youth council members as volunteers. So really excited to have students out at the site in the summertime.
We're working on a newer collaboration with the Ecology Center. And this will affect second grade and possibly seventh grade. And so we met with them today, and it looks like things are right along. We will focus on a plant, focus with the plant communities with the second graders. And then the Ecology Center will focus on composting and recycling concepts with a zero-waste program that they're developing. So exciting. And for the seventh grade pilot, we are looking for a waste and water tour. And we have done something similar in the past, but we want to bring this back along with planning for high school programs to allow them to practice their skills and apply their knowledge that they've learned in the classroom.
So looking ahead, we're continuing to implement our advisory committee recommendations and working to make Freeman a hub for district sustainability initiatives. And we're working on a phased plan to expand program offerings and create a systematic pre-K to 12 environmental education learning progression for all of our great students. And also just wanted to end by sharing that Dave and I are serving on the task force and collaborating with the Teaching and Learning Working Group to prepare recommendations for the board on expanded sustainability education opportunities in Ann Arbor Public Schools. I want to say thanks for having us tonight and appreciate being here with you.
Thank you.
The final piece I wanted to add is trustees, the design of a program like this, very similar to how Project Lead the Way is facilitated at elementary, is to have a set of educators who are, who are the highest in performance and commitment and passion. And then that sparks an elevation of the level of instruction all across the district. So it's a similar model to what we use in Project Lead the Way that are designated Project Lead the Way teachers are passionate and committed and high performers. And they, if you will, cross-pollinate those practices across our teaching staff. And the teaching staff does vice versa. So don't, don't let these guys fool you. They are the heart and soul of the program, but they are also a part of a district-wide network of committed educators to the environment. So I just want to give you a shout out again. Thank you so much. I still remember the board meeting that we came out there and we saw the kids present their research projects. And that was in the before times. And I look forward to doing that kind of thing again so that we can all be out at Freeman and see the great work that you've done there. Thank you. So of course, our critical mission is teaching and learning and building that environmentalism into our students as they grow and develop in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Also important, though, to our district-wide commitment is our organizational practices, particularly with the Capital Bond Program, as we renew our school campuses and as we operate our school campuses to be committed to the environment. So Mr. Lautzana is going to share briefly this evening really that organizational practice, bucket number two. And then thirdly, an update, trustee Kiraher referred to it just now, but an update on our Environmental Sustainability Task Force. Mr. Lautzana? Mr. Lautzana?
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, Ann Arbor community, Board of Education, President Lazarus. And it's a real pleasure to follow Dave and Court this evening. Kind of, you know, that's, that's the reason we do the work we do in the capital program is to support amazing teaching and learning in the district. And I'm so pleased with all of the work that they do around environmental education. I have a, a quite a, quite a few slides here, but I'm going to move kind of quickly. And Miss Osinski will make sure that all of this is posted on the website. So if I don't read every single bullet point, you know, there's, you can pull down that presentation and, and read it at a later time. I'll start with a capital improvement program update on environmental sustainability. As this graphic is probably familiar to a lot of people, these are the four cornerstones of the capital bond program. And the green box in the lower right, a commitment to sustainable environmentally responsible infrastructure and creating resilient schools for climate change. And that's what, we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. One of our fundamental tenants is understanding, and there's a lot of research that, that supports this, that students' health and wellbeing impacts their cognitive performance, their overall wellbeing, and in the end affects their, their performance in school. And we think about things like how students hear acoustically, how they breathe, the quality of the air in their classrooms, how they see the visual environment, how they feel thermally, whether they're too hot or too cold can have a destructive impact on their learning experience. And all of this impacts how students think and how they learn. So Dr. Swift reminded us of the board's environmental sustainability policy, really focusing on the four areas bolded in the second paragraph, environmental sustainability, education, student leaders, you heard about that earlier. And I'm going to talk today about district buildings and grounds. And we are building partnerships through the task force, which I'll talk about in the second part of the presentation. Just an update on some of our operations and maintenance efforts. We have worked to optimize our ventilation and filtration, continue water quality work. We've enhanced our ventilation significantly during COVID days. We have new recycling infrastructure, thanks to a grant from Eagle. We have started with Dave and Court for targeted areas of Freeman, which had about 20 acres of mowed grass when the district moved back into the building. And much of that now is on a two-year mowing cycle as opposed to a weekly mowing cycle during the school year. We've updated our building automation control systems, done some lighting and some retro commissioning. And all of this has garnered almost $400,000 in rebates from DTE Energy, recognizing the energy efficiency that's resulted from those efforts. These are some of the new recycling containers and signage that are in our buildings. But we also have four new electric buses. We're participating in a pilot program funded through Volkswagen settlement monies with the state of Michigan and DTE Energy. And we're learning a lot from this. We have had some performance issues with the buses and we're working with the manufacturer of the buses and the charging infrastructure to sort those out. And we're excited to get these buses fully functional and then look forward to expanding the electric fleet in APS. We've been doing, as we do site improvements, we've been improving our stormwater management at APS as part of our mission to better manage stormwater and minimize flooding and clean water before it leaves our sites. One of the recognized things is, as I mentioned before, is thermal comfort. And this chart on the right, the psychometric chart shows the balance of both temperature and humidity that's ideal for student performance, staying in that, that sort of rectilinear zone in the middle there, the comfort zone. And recognizing that as temperatures rise and our buildings are old, we've begun implementing air conditioning and you can see the schedule for air conditioning there. That our goal is by the fall of 2024, 100% of our square footage in APS will be air-conditioned. And you can see the progress on that program here. We have three schools completed. We have the three elementaries, Angel, Burns Park, and Carpenter. Once we get the electrical service upgrade, those will be online. And Community High School, third floor is completed and will be done fall of '22 along with Scarlet and Tappan. Dick and Lakewood and Mitchell are completed. And you can see the schools that are starting work this summer and their completion dates on the, on the right side. As we're doing the air conditioning lighting, we, we recognize that the blinds, the window treatments in, in many of our classrooms are older and somewhat functional or not functional at all. And so we've been replacing them with a nice commercial blind that is easy to operate. It does, it does not have the issues with your typical kind of Venetian blinds over time. And as we move through the air conditioning, we're installing those blinds. Likewise, we recognize that the luminous environment, the lighting environment is important for learning. And some studies show as much as a 21% increase in student learning rates or reading comprehension in a proper lighting environment. And so as we're doing the air conditioning work, we're also doing lighting updates. And you can see some of those classroom on the right at Tappan, on a Community High School, and some hallways, Burns Park and Lakewood. And you can see the, the progress on, on the left side there. One of the things that we're really excited about is the amount of solar that we've been able to install through the bond program. Once we complete these Bryant, Pioneer, and Westerman preschool, Ann Arbor Public Schools will be the largest owner of solar in Washtenaw County with the exception of DTE Energy. So we're really proud of that. We have a, a lot of solar energy and again, more than any other institution or private entity in Washtenaw County other than DTE Energy is APS. And our estimate is that we will be generating approximately 6% of our annual electric consumption from the solar arrays. And Dr. Swift mentioned, we have some, some exciting possibilities to, for some new partnerships to expand that percentage greatly in the coming years ahead. These are just some pictures of, this is Huron High School. These are not small installations. This is Forsyth Middle School. Ann Arbor Steam. Hazely, pretty much covered most of the roof at Hazely. So other things that we're working on, we've been partnering in a low-carbon concrete group along with the city and other local entities, looking at how we can reduce the, the carbon impact of things like asphalt paving and concrete in site work. And we've been able to implement a new specification for many of our paving projects that uses a higher amount of recycled asphalt in the paving and also a concrete mix that is, has lower carbon intensity. Carbon, concrete is one of the most carbon-intensive building materials out there. And there's a lot of effort at reducing the amount of Portland cement. And this new specification seems to be performing well for us so far. We've also been upping our C and D, construction and demolition, recycling, including a lot of steel as we're doing these mechanical systems upgrades. And we've been working with Armstrong Worldwide. The district has a lot of ceiling tiles. And when we do these lighting and other upgrades, we, many times we're replacing those ceiling tiles. And so we recycled a semi-trailer full of ceiling tiles last summer. And those went back to their, their facility and will be remanufactured into new ceiling tiles. So we're going to be continuing that program. We are also excited to be putting in, well, in addition to Skyline High School, which has a geothermal system, the renovations at Clegg and Forsyth, which are beginning this spring and will, will carry through for about 18 to 24 months. We'll convert those buildings to a geothermal heating and cooling system. It will be a much more efficient and cost-effective system for us. And it'll make the buildings primarily all-electric. We do have, with these older buildings, we have a small natural gas backup. Primarily, these buildings will be all-electric once these projects are completed. We'd also, and, uh, Dave and Court mentioned this, we're really excited in the board-approved bond plan. We have outdoor learning enhancements slated for all elementary and K-8 buildings. And you can see the schedule below. And we're really looking forward to working with our educators to design outdoor learning environments that'll give the best opportunity for people to get outside. And whether it's a science lesson, environmental ed lesson, or even a math lesson or English lesson, outdoor spaces to, to conduct those activities. The task force, well, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But it's to advise the Board of Education on a sustainability plan. We've been meeting monthly and I'll have a little more update on that shortly. And we are, as Dr. Swift mentioned, in the process of selecting an environmental sustainability officer. And that position has been posted and we are in the interview phase. And we do have a capital improvement program website. I encourage people to check it out, a2schoolsbond.org. And you can see projects happening at all the different schools around the district, the history of the bond, some of the materials that led to the approval of the bond, as well as some of the plans moving forward. So I thank you to our Ann Arbor community for their generous investment in our building infrastructure. It's a, it's a, it's a generational investment in our buildings, many of whom are, many of which are very outdated, not very energy-efficient. They're not serving our students and teachers to the full ability of a modern building. And so we're really pleased to have the opportunity to refresh and renew and enhance our school buildings and campuses. I'll move on to the environmental sustainability task force update. So this is the, the sort of the charge, if you will, of the, the environmental sustainability task force to advise the Board of Education on a formal sustainability plan and, and how that would impact operations, capital improvement, and other district endeavors related to sustainability. These are our members and you heard from two of them tonight. And thank you trustees, Caraharo and Johnson, for your participation and support with this. So these are, this is kind of what we've, we've done to date. You'll see the, the meetings and the dates, what we talked about. And I'll kind of, in the subsequent slides, I'll, I'll talk through some of those meetings. But basically the process, we spent some time, we have had a presentation from the city of Ann Arbor. We'll have more presentations soon from other groups. But we did, did some background work and studied several school districts around the country and one in Australia and looked at their work in sustainability. We conducted a SWOT and a SOAR analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. And I'll show you the results of those exercises. In April, we had the opportunity to meet two candidates for the Director of Environmental Sustainability. And we will begin working in working groups and developing recommended goals from those working groups to bring to the full task force as well as to the Board of Education. So this is, I know you can't read this and it's not really meant to be read, but it, this is really, it's a very large spreadsheet that we developed for each of the school districts that we studied. So number four here is the Seattle Public Schools, St. Paul Public Schools. And we looked at what are their inputs, what resources are available to support their sustainability efforts? What activities do they conduct on an ongoing basis, basis to support those activities? What are their outputs in terms of annual reporting and things of that nature? What are their short-term goals, midterm goals? And really, what's their vision? What's their, you know, look down the road? What's the big vision for these school districts? And so we, we did this for five different school districts. And some of the recurring themes that, that we saw, we, we put those together and our task force did kind of an informal voting or a star-dot type exercise. And through, we've been using an online, since we've been meeting virtual and online kind of whiteboard program. So people were able to go in and grab stars and put stars next to, and you'll see on the right side, the inputs and resources at the top, the activities, the outputs, and the results at the bottom. And people place stars on things that were happening in other school districts they thought were applicable or good ideas for Ann Arbor Public Schools to look at based on our research. And so this is a summary of all those items that really received at least two stars or dots from committee members. And you'll see on the input slash resources side, school green teams really rose to the top as something that they felt, we saw a lot of that in other districts with strong sustainability programs. And that was something that the committee felt was important. On the activities side, a robust curriculum integration. That was by far and above the highest rated of all of these activities. And then outdoor learning enhancements were also rated very highly. You can, and you can also see regular and frequent report, reporting and the accountability to, to make that reporting happen. We did see a number, a couple of districts where there seemed to have been some kind of a big push. Let's say in 2012 and there was, then there was a report in 2013 and there was not a lot of activity after that. So that frequency and the accountability to keep that reporting going is really important. And you can see some of the other items here that were also thought to be significant. So a SWOT is a tool that's often used in strategic planning. And it, it's an exercise where you look at an organization or an initiative and you think about there's the strengths of the organization or that initiative. What are some of the weaknesses? And you also look, and those two are kind of your internal look. And then what are some of your external factors that impact your, your initiative or organization? And what are sort of those opportunities, if you will? And what are some of the threats? What are some of the concerns or issues that might be problematic in, in furthering the goals of the initiative? And so again, this is the sticky board, virtual program. So you can see weaknesses. Just read a couple of these, you know, stress due to COVID, staff bandwidth, a constrained general fund budget. Reliance on parent volunteers and some of the equity issues that are, that may be related to that. And then on the, on the, the threat side, what are some of the external issues? We have divided state and federal political landscape, which is a problem in, in some cases. The turnover of elected leaders. I think we have a board right now that's very supportive of environmental sustainability initiatives, but that may not be the case two, three, five years from now. And so that's a potential threat. Obviously, the pandemic, the climate crisis, and other unstable, unstable K-12 funding is another potential threat. On the strengths and weaknesses, we have a lot going for us in Ann Arbor Public Schools. We have a lot of family engagement. We have a community that strongly supports sustainability. We have a lot of existing outside partnerships and the potential for a lot of new and exciting outside partnerships. Obviously, we have our generous Obviously we have our generous bond and sinking fund financial resources and a supportive Board of Education. So those are some of our strengths. Some of our opportunities deepen our collaboration with like EMU, WCC, St. Joe's. More student voice and leadership development was seen as an opportunity. And the opportunity to be a, a K-12 national leader. And again, I'm not going to read all of these, but these are all individual thoughts from different task force members responding to this exercise. And so then we conducted a SOAR exercise, which, which is kind of a follow-up exercise where you, you look at your, the, the good side, if you will, your strengths and your opportunities, your internal strengths and your external opportunities. And then think about what are your aspirations? What are your, you know, what's the big picture? What are you really trying to do? And what are the results? How do you measure success of those aspirational goals? And so then we conducted that activity. And you can see some of the aspirations that committee members put on the, put on the whiteboard here. Net zero by 2030. Comprehensive district, district-wide integrated sustainability curriculum, K through 12. Community engagement, an aspiration for the district to be seen as a national leader. An aspiration that all stakeholders are engaged in reaching sustainability goals. See, these are some of the aspirations. And then what are the results? How do we measure success against these aspirations? Success might be that the state of Michigan adopts an integrated sustainability curriculum statewide. Success might be measured by a result of APS diverting 80% of its waste from landfills. Another one that schools, there are a high number of schools completing sustainability projects every year. And you can see other, other areas that people looked at there. And so with, with that background work done and really kind of analyzing what other school districts have done, and then taking a look with the SWOT, with the, the SWOT and the SOAR exercise, it kind of, where are we in APS and what are our opportunities for growth? We looked back at the board policy and thought about a, a working group structure to deep, dive deeper into specific areas. And we came up with four working groups. The first one, and these kind of tie back to the board's policy. You can see the, the shading and the connections that were, we identified there. Teaching and learning, obviously being one of the working groups, health and wellness, climate resilience and community partnerships. And so the next thing we conducted was just to kind of think about what goes in these different buckets. You know, what are the different committees going to, working groups going to look at? And so you can see under teaching and learning, some of the ideas that we came up with, like what, what lives in that working group, climate resilience, the kinds of things that would live inside of that working group. And then health and wellness and community partnerships, what, what, you know, in, in terms of health and wellness, what are we thinking about? And in community, terms of community partnerships, who, who and how might we engage with them? And so the final, the next thing that we're working on, and we have a, a upcoming meeting where we're going to dive deeply into this, is for the working groups to bring specific recommendations forward from their working group to the, to the entire committee. And we're using another, we're really leaning on sort of tried and true strategic planning methodologies and tools that have been used widely by a lot of organizations doing these kinds of analysis about how to move initiatives forward in their organization. And so in terms of bringing forward a goal, we're looking at a, what's known as a smarty goal. And that, that takes a goal, let's say the goal is to increase the rate of recycling or to increase the amount of local food in the cafeteria or to reduce the carbon footprint from electricity in the school district. So with a smarty goal, you look at how is, can you define a specific goal? Is it measurable? How do you measure that you're meeting that goal or working towards that goal? Is it attainable? Do you have the right resources? Are there regulatory or other constraints? Is it relevant? Does it align with the mission of the district? Does it conflict with any other strategies? Is it time-based? Can you put a timeline on it? And does it, does it kind of sync up with the rhythm of the organization? And then is it inclusive? Can any stakeholder participate or is anybody excluded from the process of meeting that goal? And is it equitable? Have we considered how to mitigate any unintended biases in the process of achieving that goal? And so the next several meetings with the committee will be looking at specific goals and then how we can kind of fill in a little bit behind the goal in terms of really analyzing how it will meet the, the overall aspirations of the school district. And so that's kind of the update of where we are with the environmental sustainability task force.
I just want to say that in closing, thank you, Mr. Latsana, for this great work. I know it is, we gave you a big goal and there's a lot of parts and pieces that you have to break down first before you can give us the recommendation. But it looks like you're on the right track and we appreciate all the work that you and the team have done and the committees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get some rest.